Freedom, come here, come here.
Uh, I don't know.
I'll just take this.
(laughing).
(knocking) Town meeting to order. Stand for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever. Excuse me. I'd like to welcome everybody for the December 3rd town meeting. We usually have it on Monday. Tuesdays are unusual, but we have them every once in a while. Please turn your phones off or put them on airplane mode if you can. Silence your phones. Upcoming meeting minutes. There's a board workshop on Monday, December 16th at 7:30 PM. A planning commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 17th at 7:30 PM. And town council will meet on Monday, January 6th at 7:30 PM. Any other meetings that anybody has scheduled other than these?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Meeting minutes. Has everybody read the meeting minutes?
Yes.
No changes or anything?
I had none.
You have any changes to meeting minutes, Frank?
Good.
I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the... Trying to get the right date.
November 4th.
From the November 4th meeting as presented. I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Are we, are we then voting on the November 18th minutes separately?
Um, yes, because it was a separate meeting.
Okay.
Has everybody looked at the November 18th meeting minutes?
Yes, sir.
Any corrections?
I had none.
Yes, sir.
No one? Okay, I need a motion for the November 18th meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the November 18th meeting minutes as presented.
One second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries five to zero. Police report. Deputy Whitehouse.
Good evening. Deputy Whitehouse, Forest County Sheriff's Office. This is the November 2019 town, or monthly report. Not a whole lot of action in town through November. Majority of stuff, because the majority of the things we had, just traffic stops, kind of more proactive stuff with a lot of walking, patrol checks. See the arrests and violations that we had at the bottom. The traffic stops are pretty high. I mean, this, we're almost at 1,400 traffic stops for the year. So that's actually pretty high. The special assumptions you can see at the bottom, I attended the turkey trot on Thanksgiving morning, and Deputy Ahal was here for the town meeting last month. Additional information, Deputy Ahal and myself each had two days at court. There was an opioid overdose. There was two large parties that were reported to the Mount staff. And we're we putting something out here in reference to porch pirating or package thefts, because this coming to be around the holiday season. Just ways to try to prevent that or deter it in any way, so people don't get their items stolen off their porches. So, that was quick. Any questions for me at all? Anybody? Yes?
You reported, uh, so the Mount parties were reported to the college and they handled it internally?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Trump.
I just want to acknowledge the deputy's volunteer service at the turkey trot. He opted on a day off to attend, so as not to obligate Deputy Ahal, did I got that right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to have to drive a longer distance, so my hat's off to you, sir, for
Sure.
That event. It's, you know, three hours, we could be in bed sleeping, but we're out there having a great time nevertheless, or trying to have a good time.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, sir, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Deputy Whitehouse?
Okay. Thanks.
Alrighty, we got the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for October of 2019. I'll highlight some of the key areas related to streets. Staff conducted street sign maintenance around town, and they assisted the contractor with the installation of the new sewer manhole on East Main Street. Related to parks, we installed a new LED wall pack lights in front of the pool building. We removed the rock wall and swing set in community park prior to the installation of the new playground. The equipment will be reinstalled in Memorial Park in the spring of 2020, with plans to update the playground in Memorial Park. The constructor installed a new all-inclusive playground. Staff painted the first dugout at ball field number four in Memorial Park, and a contractor trimmed some trees in Memorial Park from South Seton Avenue to Chesapeake Avenue. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is now back at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Lake water, wait, excuse me, the lake quota is still not being met due to poor water quality from the lake. Below will be listed the well levels. Water production, we produced an average of 288,907 gallons per day and consumed approximately 236,223 gallons per day, which meant the backwash water was about 28.9%. We got 62% of the water from the wells and only 33.2% from the lake. Ideally, we want to get 50% from the lake. We purchased approximately 428,700 gallons from the Mount in the month of October. Related to wastewater, we received about 7.4 inches of precipitation in the month of August. We currently, as of October 31st, we had a surplus of 6.2 inches. Wastewater, we treated an average of 465,000 gallons per day and consumed 236,223, which meant 49.2% of the water treated was wild water or wastewater. We had one spill of untreated sewage in the month of October, and that was October 31st. We lost about 4,500 gallons at manhole number 12, 12 being 60, which is on North Seton Avenue. MDE and the Health Department were notified. We exceeded the plant design's capacity on three times, three times in the month of October. We had minor flooding of the lower level of the pump station that occurred during the sanitary sewer overflow. Other than that, the wastewater treatment plant ran smoothly in the month of October. Trash pickups will remain Mondays in the month of December. There will be no adjusted holiday pickup. Following that are the meetings, some of the meetings I attended in the month of October, which is a very busy month in here. We highlighted some of the noteworthy items that occurred. As we mentioned in one of my emails, the staff repaired a water leak on Waynesboro Pike. Commissioner Ritz inquired if that was contributed to any of the ongoing complaints, and it did. And then the manhole was installed in East Main. October, we did begin our hydrant flushing, which we do every six months. And then staff made several visits to the bridge project to assist in locating valves that keep getting covered up. We did receive notice that for the foreseeable future, they will be working Saturdays. However, there should be no traffic disruptions as they try to finish up the project. That's the manager's report for October.
Is there any questions for the town manager?
Yes, sir.
I do have one. Do you know when they're going to start the blacktop? I see they had the side, curbs are on?
Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, yes. I think they said two or three days that it would take them.
Yeah, it's going to be warm this week, it'll be a nice time to blacktop. It's going to be over 40 degrees. In the sidewalks, are they going to start them too?
I believe after the paving.
Alrighty. Before they switch it over, I know they had the, before they can do the sidewalk on the other side, they had to switch everything over.
Right. You're right.
Alrighty. Any other questions for Kathy? Mr. Ritz?
No, I had the one ahead of time. If, thank you.
Oh, I also wanted to say what a nice job the staff did putting all the Christmas decorations up to snowflakes, really looked nice to the town.
Thank you.
Okay, town planners' report.
Hello, everybody. I'm also going to highlight some key points from October. This is the town planners' report. So for grants, I continue to work with property owners on the new round of community legacy grant applications. We just did receive word the other day that we were awarded $55,000 for fiscal year 2020, and this is 5,000 more than every other year that we've ever received, so that's a great bonus. I think it's because of the success that we've had with the program in the past. For grant, also for grants, I applied for two different grants, Keep Maryland Beautiful and a Purina Dog Park grant, and I continue to submit the community legacy reimbursement requests under MS4 for our stormwater management. Amy and I held a rain barrel workshop on the first, which was very heavily attended. It was a really great turnout. We're in discussions right now with potential nonprofit in order to meet our tree planting restoration requirements. This has a potential to save the town a lot of money. We also are in discussions with the daughters of charity for potential tree planting locations, so that's also going to help us out with our program. Under permits and zoning, we issued five zoning permits for the month, and we also issued nine cross connection permits. Under planning commission, I reviewed and processed the Duncan site plan and provided staff comments. That is ready and approved, and we're just waiting on the zoning permit. Also received and started processing the Rutter Store number 84 improvement plan. On the next page under miscellaneous, I created the sewer relining project maps. We met with the town manager, town clerk, and Mark Long regarding the 2020 Green Fest, which is sounding to be like a great event, and researched the town sewer water tap fee history. I completed and submitted MDOT's Form HPS 20, which is the annual road improvement report, and prepared. Also, the mayor and I attended the MDOT and Shaw's annual meeting on the 30th regarding trying to get the North Seton Avenue Bridge project up and running. Those are the main points. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the town planner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Regarding the Rutter site plan, they, if I understand what you're saying, they've returned it to you after we provided comments at the planning commission meeting a number of, like, two months ago? Is that about, is that correct?
The Duncan or the Rutters?
Rutters.
Okay, so the Rutters, the planning commission approved the forest conservation plan and the site plan, so the next step was the improvement plan.
Okay.
They met a few weeks ago, and the plan was tabled to research some other things, so...
Okay. In what you saw at that time, did you feel it was better aligned with the architectural guidelines? There were some aesthetics that the former Commissioner Blanchard had mentioned in one meeting regarding the exterior elevation materials?
Do you mean, did they make any adjustments to the site plan based off? I don't believe they did.
Okay.
No.
This improvement plan basically is for the water, sewer, roads, and sidewalks.
Terrific. Alright. But nothing regarding the structure itself? We haven't heard back about that?
Basically, the approval of the site plan was the approval of the architectural specs of it.
Okay. Do you know if there was any modification based on the requests that came forth from the board at that time then?
There's none.
No changes whatsoever?
No changes.
That's unfortunate. Okay. Okay. That's it, Mr. President, for myself.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Ritz?
No, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I don't know if I can bring it up now, because you have, you tabled the Rutters meeting, but I want to bring this up. We worked hard on connecting our sidewalks and everything up to the, to all the developments of Southern Town, and hopefully Rutters will connect their sidewalks up to the town so people can walk in from there. A lot of truck drivers are going to be sleeping there and want to come in to eat, and they can't drive the truck trailers and park them in town.
State Highway said no to sidewalks along 140, correct?
No.
No?
They said they wanted them.
They wanted them. State Highway didn't? Okay, I take, withdraw that. I guess I missed out on that part. To the town.
Hopefully, though, we can keep it walkability out that way, because if we open the other side up to future development, when they put the water and sewer in, we're going to need sidewalks from them businesses to come in.
Oh, no, I was talking about, he's talking about to town. You're talking about the connection to town.
Yeah, well, I mean, around the building and everything. You don't want to have, you know, people got to be able to get to the town.
Would that, would that fall on State Highway then, to create the sidewalk across the bridge and everything of that nature?
Yes. And right now, from what I'm understanding, when I spoke with Shaw, they have no intentions of doing that right now, however.
With their parking lot?
Not currently, but when that comes in, if that comes in, that might be a possibility.
Can we put that bug in their ear?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have been...
That's something we would very much like to see as a priority to the spec?
Yep. I've been definitely talking with, his name's Devin, I believe, and he's our representative for our area, and he reviews all the plans on SHA's roads, so we definitely want that to happen.
The town worked hard on connecting everything up. We were missing a lot of sidewalk pieces in town, and it's finally all connected. It'd be nice to keep the town connected as it grows out that way.
Would it, would it be outside of the scope of our December 17th meeting to bring that up, assuming that SHA will be at that meeting?
SHA will not be at the 17th meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can definitely, we can draft a letter for you if you wish.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, we can draft a letter.
It might tie in nicely to the discussion we will be having.
Sure.
You know, sidewalks in general.
Yep, we can definitely do something like that.
I mean, the simple reality is, is, you know, we want to think the drivers might come to town, that's true, but I feel there's a higher probability of people from town who are going to be working there are going to be walking there, as opposed to having the option to drive just yet. So, with that in mind, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Mr. President, can I play devil's advocate for a second?
Sure.
What kind of construction would then be done on the bridge over 15, and what kind of headache would that create? Not to, just, we've already had one bridge issue in town. Would there be a separate issue with the connection of putting sidewalks along that bridge, or, it just?
They have the space. I mean, I think...
Yeah, I understand that they have the space. I'm just playing devil's advocate, because do we want to go from one bridge project where we have obviously had a headache with to a second bridge project with a sidewalk? I'm just throwing that out there.
Sure, yeah, that's a really good point. Maryland and Pennsylvania both have, just like the pedestrian walkway now.
Correct.
That could be a possibility for Shaw, but it's really ultimately up to them, but yeah.
I just, we've gone from one bridge project and don't want to create another headache in town for citizens to be upset about.
But we also don't want to put them in harm's way.
No, I completely understand.
I mean, that's kind of...
I completely agree.
I know what you're saying. You could, you could have a pylon, delineated area, which is virtually no construction. That's like, for lack of a better professional term, a hot glue.
Yep.
And some paint. There are creative and clever ways where the bridge would not be interrupted.
They're going to be doing it for the, for our town bridge. They're going to open it up to its regular way, and they're going to put the sidewalk on the other side that doesn't have it now, so they'll be able to do it while it's open.
Okay. I was just devil's advocate.
Yeah, they got a lot of extra room up there. They have...
Yeah, we have. I ride my bike across at all times, and there's plenty of room. I just don't want to go from one bridge project to a second one where people might get upset again.
But my concern is Rutters and the businesses putting their sidewalks in around their businesses, because we want to be able to connect them up into the future, I mean, if we can be. Not to, you know, the town have to go, we had to go pay for these, or had to get grant money for these that we had to connect up through town before, and I don't want that to happen again.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We were down at the meeting for the North Seton Avenue Bridge. We went through everything about, you know, it's getting old, it's falling apart, and they were all yelling. But one thing really got their attention was, we, I asked them, it's dangerous. We have a lot of people going from FEMA out to the new, the restaurant out there, very popular, and from our community, that like, that are walking there, and they really grabbed, grabbed them, their attention about, that was the one thing about, you can say it's falling apart, they got thousands of these bridges in the state, but the safety of that, and I tied it to, we have this wonderful fallen firefighters event up here every year, and I'd hate to be honoring one of these firemen who was killed on a bridge. So, we're going to follow up with a letter on them, because it really got, stirred them up a little bit, and it's a, it's a good one, but I think Commissioner O'Donnell brought that up about two years ago, about a walkway over there, and it's something we just got to keep hitting on. That's it. It's a great point. Thank you. Thank you.
Alrighty. Any other questions for the town planner? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, John. Mr. Com, comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you for tolerating my pedestrian enthusiasm. I did attend the county in November pedestrian and bicycling meeting. They've, they're working through their priorities right now as to where to apply funding from community requests. The turkey trot was a great success. It was very much volunteer-driven. I saw more than a few commissioners out there, and a few retired commissioners, temporarily or whatnot, how to describe them, I don't know. It was a lot of fun, and really, my hat's off to Officer Whitehouse. I mean, truly, he came up on his own time, and he follows the run until it's done, and not everybody there is an Olympic runner, so he's, he's there for the long haul. I met with and had more than a few phone calls with individuals related to their water questions. I don't think anybody walked away unhappy, and I want to commend town staff for their responses. I feel most of the people seem to feel they had been listened to, and they felt there was an appropriate response to it. That's my judgment. I know we have some, you know, existing matters to address perhaps tonight, I hope, but I can't say I have any complaints about what I heard about staff, which is nice to, you know, be able to say. The tree lighting, I was not able to make the early part, but the carriage ride stuff was fun at the carriage house appropriately, the hayrides. I had one question about the bridge over 140, sorry, the 140 bridge over 15. I'll follow up with staff on that, hopefully, in the next day or two, and what was the other item? Oh, of course. Trail volunteer day on Sunday, the 15th. Breakfast before, some work in between, and lunch afterwards, all free, so please feel free to join us up at Rainbow Lake. We meet at 9:00 AM, we finish at about 1:00, and despite the fact we're working, it's actually a lot of fun. So hopefully, some folks in the community will be willing to join us, and it will be a nice day. Thanks. Oh, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz?
I apologize, I was not able to attend the tree lighting last night due to conflicting schedule, but thank you for everybody who helped with that. Thank you to town staff for the town square on Veterans Day. Looked really nice with the American flags out. And the Christmas lights, I've heard nothing but positive comments on those, and it's nice to see them expand from last year. Congratulations to Catoctin Football for a fantastic season, and best of luck this weekend, hoping they can win state championship. And I just came from my grandmother's house, and I know she's not watching, but I'd like to wish a happy 97th birthday to my grandmother, Sophie Lind. Happy birthday, Grammy.
Happy birthday.
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Just going to repeat a few things. Staff, I happened to be here when they were fielding some of the phone calls from the residents, and they took a beating this last month. We're sorry for that. I would just like to remind the people that staff's not the one that should be taking the beating, we should be taking the beating. So, come see us, come call us, set up a meeting with us, but by calling staff and, you know, letting your frustrations out, that's not going to get things fixed. So that's our job, is to take care of that, so everybody out there just kind of remember that. And also, Catoctin Football, again, very proud of our community. We were able to come up with over half of the money that it took to get the game streamed live. I heard from WTHU, Monday, they had 24,000 people stream into that football game. So it was, and this was all little $20 donations here and there, and then the town in Thurmond popped in 300 bucks to finish that off. So, I just now heard from the WTHU that Beckley's has kicked in $800 for Saturday's game, and the mayor has graciously put in the other 200, so the game on Friday will be streamed, but it'll also be on, on local cable TV. So our, we heard from a lot of servicemen, and from people that live in outside the state that watch that game, so that'll be there. There will be a parade after the game to welcome the kids back home, win or lose. More to follow on that. We're thinking probably 8:30-ish, something like that. It will come through Emmitsburg and end up in Thurmond at the high school, so we'll try to keep everybody posted as much as we can what's happening in there with that. So, we got a lot of local kids that play, and we're very, very proud of them, so that's all I got.
Mr. Brown?
I just want to echo a few of the other comments. Thanks to all the volunteers who worked on the Thanksgiving Day turkey trot. As cold as it was outside in the 40 mile an hour winds, there was a great turnout, and enjoyed riding my bike behind with Commissioner O'Donnell. The tree lighting was also a great success. The young members of the community really enjoyed Santa Claus coming to town, the hayrides, and the live nativity scene as well. Like Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Davis, I spoke with a lot of people in regards to the water situation in town. Anybody I spoke with on the phone or via email seemed very satisfied with what staff was doing. We're still working. It's obviously a work in progress every day to hopefully satisfy the concerns of those who still have them and will continue to work with them, and like Commissioner Davis said, you know, come to us. Our phone numbers are available, our email addresses are available, and we're pretty available throughout the day in town, and would be more than happy to help with your concerns and get this all resolved, hopefully in a timely fashion. And then, again, with Catoctin Football, from one former athlete to the future athletes of this area, good luck this weekend, and hopefully they win.
Thank you.
I also echo some of the comments that have already been made. The town did a really good job with cleaning up the town, getting ready for Christmas. I mean, it had so many comments about how nice the square and everything looks. Also, the Lions Club will be having a free Christmas activities, the Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, hot chocolate, hot dogs, magic show, and everything free for the town, for everybody in the town, on December the 14th from 10:00 to 1:00. It'll be at the fire, our fire company's Activities Building on Creamy Road, and it's all open to the town. It's all open free, and will be provided from the Lions Club. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm a little froggy. It's like the Home Shopping Network, but we have some great calendars right out. We have the fire, the glass, that's in the fire, and our clock, they're free, they're out, out front here, they're a limited number, so be sure you grab one of those, they're wonderful. We're also, we've got a Christmas tree ornament. It's of our clock. It's very special, and we have the light, and the bulbs there, and they have prices, I think these are $10, and the bulbs are seven. Great, great ornaments. It's terrific. It's all these new traditions that are happening here. Like Zach mentioned, I did go to the water rain barrel thing. Community's really jumping on that, and we got to make living in Maryland affordable, and it's so tough. When you look at the baseline for one person to live here is $31,000. If a family of four barely get by, it's like $84,000, $85,000 to live in this state of Maryland. And we have a lot of people up here. It's very tough. We don't want to raise our water bills, we don't, we want to do everything we possibly can, and at the same time, it's a tipping point. We're trying to track a lot of new, it takes a lot of... We're trying to track a lot of new, it takes a lot of people up here, but we gotta look, focus on that. I heard from Commissioner Davis that if it ever came to the point that we had to have it all professional, correct me if I'm correct, I'll be close, I hope, they have cost about $7 or $8 million to have a professional staff up here. You can imagine where that's gonna fit in all, it's all coming up this road this way, where they don't have the families and traditions like Thurmond and here, so that's a sleeper cell thing that, but we gotta make Emmitsburg an affordable place. We gotta do everything we possibly can. We've done LED lights, we've done solar, we're cutting back on our cars, we're trying to do everything else, we got a staff that's working self to death. They have broader responsibilities now, they're all, everybody's involved in grant writing. That was never before, that was a never thing, so, great staff. Let's see what else. At that MDOT meeting, we did talk, we got their attention again on putting sidewalks across here, we're gonna follow that up. We had the ribbon-cutting, all-inclusive playground, wonderful addition to our community, about $325,000 invested from all kinds of people, including Civitan. The green meeting, we got a really hot green team. We have a responsibility with MS4, the state imposed on, to put all these trees in, but it's our responsibility to find the land, then I'll pay for the trees. But from this meeting, some of our new members, one of our new members said, well, why don't we try this volunteer group, they'll, they'll give you the trees, and they'll even plant them for you. That saves us $130,000, and we're looking at ADA compliance thing we have to do. That's good, we wanna be ADA compliant, but we're looking for $120,000 worth of investment from the town to do that. So, my job is to go out and try to get some money for that, and our jobs, excuse me. We did meet with the Middletown Planner, we're looking on economic incentives, we checked around with everybody, Tourism Council, and getting ready for the workshop we'll have on, where if it didn't announce that, we're gonna have a workshop here, open workshop on the 16th, the same time. Mount St. Mary's University Athletic Advisory Council, early in the month, on November 11th, I joined the veterans, and we went around to all the cemeteries with a 21-gun salute and taps, and I tried, I try to do that every year, they do it in November, and they do it in May. It's a terrific tradition, and wonderful people. Made a presentation at Mother Seaton School to their fourth grade, and that's always, that's always a hit, and we're trying to line one up for the elementary. We had one lined up, and they had to fall back on that. EBPA, thank you for picking up the main push on the Turkey Trot, it's a wonderful late fall, early winter event, and everybody that got involved in that, and a terrific success for Cougars. High school football is the biggest dream. I had a grandson that just finished playing high school football, and they went to college at Colorado State, and that's business, and that's, I played at the University of Kentucky, and when I played high school, it's a wonderful, it's wonderful, it's the greatest experience. And I had the opportunity of going to, playing the Naval Plebes over at that stadium, and it was a terrific experience. We were not quite as fit as the Plebes, but we did tackle them on occasions. I have, for the board here, we have this chapter meeting, I've already signed up for it, but it's the final grand finale, and if y'all will take a look at it, if you can make it over to Middletown, please let us know here. And I had one other thing. Is that it? I think that's it, but if I may read this letter from our, our former council, Dear John Clapp, Dear Mayor Briggs and Commissioners, I have received a complimentary proclamation adopted by you on October 7, 2019. Unfortunately, with my new situation, my mail has been less than reliable, and it's apparently took longer route before I received it. I want to, however, thank you and express my appreciation for this honor. It was certainly unexpected. I enjoyed my many years working with you all, your predecessors, the town staff, it considered to be my privilege to do so. Again, many thanks for the honor you bestowed on me, wishing you the best, the citizens of Emmitsburg, all the best in the Upper County holidays and the season this year. John Clapp, our former thing. I'll pass it around, guys, take a look at it. I think that's it. I've gone through the seller, oh, here, just a couple more, I'll be out, but I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Davis, I knew you, Mr. Davis, poke me with a stick, but E&amp;E Tree Service Incorporated of Walkersville has donated trees to us in the past, and they donated this tree out here for our magnificent Christmas tree, and if that, that thing, the estimated value of it is $1,500, and they donated that to us. It took $500, which somebody else came in and did, to plant the tree. It's a permanent tree, and I wanna thank, thank them again. They're, E&amp;E Trees of Walkersville, they're open, and if you get down there, there are a lot of things going on, they're very busy. Denny Eball, the sexton at St. Joseph's here, he was in for heart surgery, they punctured part of his heart, filled up with blood, he's doing well, and we wish him the very best. And from his wife to Zach, Zach, he's got that thing in there, whatever is your back flow, at the St. Joseph's has the back flow that's in there, he's just waiting for the proper bill to come back from their plumber, and he'll be there to see him. Also, Pastor John, his wife is suffering greatly from, excuse me, from cancer, and just wish, wish him the best. And Elias Church is, if you can get up there Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday, they have, at their church, Elias Church, they have sandwiches and soup, and it'd be a wonderful thing. I'm gonna take the staff, at least the field boys up there on Tuesday, and I hope, Commissioners, you can get up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
Did I hear him correct? He said he was buying lunch on Thursday?
That's what he said.
No, that, I said you were. No, that's why I held that thing up and said, Commissioner Davis is buying lunch.
Commissioner Brown?
So, the tree outside, all donated, no cost to the town or anything like that?
Not, fantastic. Go down, go down to E&amp;E Trees, look it up, go down there and buy a wreath, a tree or anything. It's a great thing. Yes, sir.
That's fine. Are the children gonna decorate the tree this year?
Mother Seaton, no, this year, but they'll be coming over, I'll call you.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one item for clarification. When you talked about the professional staff, you're talking about professional firefighting staff, is that what you're talking about, at that expense?
Well, it's an estimate, and it's one of these creeping things that no one's talking, it all goes professional.
I was worried you were talking about our staff, and we know they cost 20 million, so, if there's a discount.
No, we're very fortunate to have a volunteer, they only have two professionals up here, and it's a, thank you, the efforts of Commissioner Davis and the rest of the guys. Thank you.
Matty, do we have public comment? Public comment, Jack Weller. Come up here and state your name and...
Yeah, I'm Jack Weller, I live on Hampton Valley Road. Of course, you gotta be blind if you don't see the, or in here, the loggers over there cutting down all the trees, so I was just asking a couple questions, I just, that's all I wanted to ask, was how much money does the town all get for these trees? I'm guessing you already got a pretty good idea.
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six grand, okay. And when do you think it'll be done? Now, I know the weather will hold them up.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
That includes the trees on the red trail?
Includes the trees that were marked in the stand five.
Okay.
So, he's to be, said he's gonna be completed in two weeks.
All right. My only, it's not any of my business, I guess, but just, it's a lot of mud up there, and, you know, we live right across from where they go in, and they can't even make it up the hill there in the morning, they gotta pull it up with the skidder, so that was just another comment. Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I answer yours? So, Mike K. with the Forest Service does go up there and make routine checks, and if there isn't anything that's damaged or out of place, he'll make sure that the logger, the logging firm does repair it, but right now, he's satisfied with the condition. We'll see what it looks like in two weeks.
Most likely, they'll have to stabilize it before they leave.
Oh, okay.
Everybody has to, any kind of construction, they'll have to stabilize the area before they leave.
Okay.
Either by seeding or mulching, or whatever.
Cause it's, cause part of it is on the one trail, the yellow trail up there too, where they're at, and it's, it's a mud, it's a mud hole.
Right.
How much, this is another question, how much does, when you buy water from the college, how much does that cost per gallon?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't know what the, what are, we pay quarterly for it, and I don't have the exact amount with me.
Okay, and one last question. The other meetings you had, like you had one on November 15th, I think, are they open to the public?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Our next meeting is December the...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, and that'll be open to the public too.
All right. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sweeney, may I follow up?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Appreciate your knowledge of the trails and their colors, happy to hear it. Regarding the follow-up regarding trail information, that's why I'm coattailing here, a cyclist who wasn't supposed to be up there was up there, and was not advised until later that he shouldn't have been there on a Sunday. No interference whatsoever with the logging crews, however, he expressed concern related to the trail condition. I have not visited yet, I don't have any yardstick to judge by, but what is the window or expectation with the vendor to give feedback related to trail conditions if there's a need for a repair?
Okay.
Cause we have that bond, and I don't wanna...
Yeah, Zach, just, the bond is good for a year, so we have up to a year to make any claim against the bond. And like I said, Mike K.'s been up there, I don't know how much he's investigated, but right now, he's satisfied, but once he wraps up, the logger wraps up in two weeks, he'll go back up there and then inspect it fully.
Okay. His concern would be the forest piece, my concern would be strictly the quality of trail?
Well, I think, I think he understands that, and he'll be looking at all parts of it, he knows how important the trails are to the town.
And Mr. K. also said that if the board would like, we can go up and visit the trails, and visit the logging area to make sure you are satisfied, because we will be bringing back another stand in near future. So, I'll let you know, I'll let the board know when they're, when they're completely done, and if we can set a date up to go up and check things out.
There's a high probability I'll be visiting probably this weekend, almost guaranteed.
Okay, great, let me know.
But I don't expect Mr. K. there, let me clarify that.
Sure, yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Only a little bit comment we had. Now, we'll move on to administrative business.
The first, or the only administrative business item that, that staff has would be amendments to Maryland State Archives Record Retention Schedules, M407, 408, which you originally adopted as Exhibit B and C with Resolution 1903R on October 7, 2019. So, prior to bringing the record retention schedule to you as the board, we submitted it to the state, the state said they were ready and, for final review and approval, so you as the board unanimously approved it, we sent it back to the state, well, they came back with four minor changes. So, the resolution does not need to be updated, we just have to get approval to make the change, those four changes for the record retention. Number one is basically taking out the deeds and easement page altogether, because the state already keeps those records permanently, that we don't need to have them on our retention schedule. Number two, three, and four are essentially grammatical and just some sentence changes, which are shown on page 19 and 20 of your packet. No other changes are needed by the state, so I just need a motion to adopt the two modification, or the four modifications, and then it'll be sent back to the state, and we'll be finally finished with the retention schedule.
Can we do those all together?
Yes. If you read, I have the motion down there, how we need it adopted, it can be one motion.
I need someone to make the motion that's presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the one modification to Exhibit B, Schedule M407, and the three modifications to Exhibit C, Schedule M408, for Resolution 19-03R, as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty, consent agenda, five appointments.
So, for your consent agenda for Parks and Rec, I believe Commissioner Davis has recommended the appointment of four people. Also, I think you had two, Commissioner Davis, that you wanted to have taken off your committee for their terms have expired and non-attendance.
Actually, there are four to come off.
Okay.
Cynthia Canadus, David Mays, and Matt and Jen Myers. Their terms have expired, and I just did hear from Shannon Cool, whose term expired, but she isn't arrested and coming back on.
Okay. So, you could have her as part of your consent agenda as well, so, looking to appoint Glenn Blanchard, Sandy Umble, Steve Starlipper, Amanda Ryder, and Shannon Cool for a two-year term at the Parks. And then, the mayor has recommended the reappointment of Diane Walbrecker, the term of December 15th to, 2019 to 2022, for the Board of Appeals.
Okay, we need motions for these?
Unanimous consent.
Okay. Is everybody okay with the five appointees that Mr. Davis has made for the Parks Commission?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, I am too. So, that's taken care of, that's unanimous, and for the Board of Appeals, Diane Warbecker? Walbeck?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Treasury Report. All right, here we go. This is, cash activity is listed here as of November 25th, 2019. Cash balance as of November 1st, 2019, $5,325,506. Deposits were in the sum of $268,725. Withdrawals were in the sum of $231,975. Our operating balance forward is $5,362,256. And listed below are the top 10 checks, and if staff is able, they might field questions if there are any.
Any questions on the Treasury Report?
I had none.
Yes, sir.
And we'll move on to the planning commission report. Mr. Ritz?
Yes, as Mr. Golden indicated, we had, we did meet on the 25th of November, and after some discussion regarding sidewalks around the perimeter of the Rutter's site, and some discussion regarding if and when the park and ride would be established, we decided to table the approval of the improvement plan until December 17th. That's it.
I have a question.
Yes.
When, when you meet on December 17th, can you, we, I mean, as long, we work very hard for trying to get all the sidewalks and stuff connected in town, can you, can you make sure that Rutter's can put some kind of sidewalk around their building? If you can, I don't know if you can or not, but it would be nice to...
When you say around the building, do you mean around the property?
The property, I mean, most people put sidewalks around their property, especially businesses when they have walkability to town. It's gonna have 18 bay sleeping area for trucks to sleep at nighttime, and if they don't eat at the Rutter's store itself, they wanna come in town to eat, and most likely gonna walk to town.
That's part of the improvement plan, part of the discussion, it was at the northern end of the property to Maryland 140. As Zach indicated, though, there's, right now, there's no, no plans for connecting that over the...
No, I, I mean...
As Zach indicated, though, there's, right now, there's no plans for connecting that over the bridge. But the rest of the property, that's part of the discussion. But yes, we are certainly, we're certainly discussing that.
I think it's only like 300 feet of sidewalk they would have to put, if they would put it. Because we had, when we had to connect the town up on all four ends, we put in almost 3,600 feet of sidewalk that we had to pay for.
Okay.
At 300 feet, I don't think they should have a problem with putting them, but...
Absolutely, yeah. That is, pretty much, that is, that's part of the approval process, and that'll probably be the majority of our discussion on the 17th.
Mr. Sweeney, may I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Is it your hope to ask the planning committee to withhold approval if the sidewalk or a path isn't in place?
They already did that. They put a table to...
Well, no, no, but I mean, moving forward again.
Oh, no, I don't want to hold it up, but...
So if I may, we have a slide that shows you where the sidewalks that the planning commission discussed, and the sidewalks within Rutter's, and then the additional sidewalks that were requested around the potential state highway park and ride that they're not sure if and when it will come in. The sidewalks and going from Rutter's...
So I'll try to explain this here. So they kind of threw us for a little loop at our last meeting. Administratively, they told us that they were going to be putting sidewalks along 140 and along this road that they are going to be building on the state highways behalf, because it gives better access to Rutter's. So we were understanding that all of this was being installed. Five minutes before the meeting, that changed. So it kind of threw us for a loop. So now, so that's what they want to, this is what they want to do now. So this is the green is what, the only thing they want to do. I know it's hard to see, but it's right here, right here, and right there only. So Kathy, the mayor, and I, we are disagreeing with that placement. Our code currently reads that any parking areas need to be, have a sidewalk that connects up to the building. So this is what we're proposing. Everything in the orange is what we want them to install. This is everything on their property. Everything in the pink is actually on the state highways property. So we cannot force them to put these sidewalks in, per the town attorney. But we can require everything in orange, in which we intend to do with the planning commission's approval.
So the stick here is the planning commission withholding approval until those sidewalks are part of the plan. Is that correct?
They can do that, yes.
The ones in yellow, or orange. The ones in yellow and orange.
Okay. No, no, yes, sorry. For clarification, sure.
The owner of the Rutter's property argued that since the park and ride is potentially not coming in, that's a lot of sidewalk that he's responsible for putting in and maintaining. You know, bad weather, cleaning off. He's responsible, would be responsible for that sidewalk.
The pink?
The pink.
No, I don't think that, we can't require them to put the pink in, correct?
Correct.
So they won't be putting that in at all.
That was his argument that night. However, since that is state...
Yes.
...property, I feel that he would be a lot more agreeable to this, but I guess we'll find out on the 17th.
Yeah.
Has the state weighed in recently related to the park and ride?
They have not. However, in what we were talking about previously, Kathy and I, I told her the wrong thing. So they aren't going to be putting sidewalk here anytime soon. However, they are requiring sidewalk here. So that's a...
They being state highway?
They being state highway.
Okay.
Yep.
So it sounds like they're setting the table for the park and ride.
I agree.
Unless we've heard something contrary, I don't know there's any reason to believe that it's not coming. So, and practically speaking, from perhaps a planner's perspective, there's logic to their plan. So I think it's incumbent upon the committee to really stand the line, toe the line.
Yeah, I mean, the yellow and the orange, or whichever color you want to think it is, is definitely something that the town, in our code, can mandate and make sure that they put in. We just don't have the authority to do the other one.
Understood.
So I think, you know, we're meeting with them next week. Next Monday, the mayor, Zach, and I are going to meet with Rutter's to go over this proposal again, and just basically tell them this is the way that it has to be. And then it'll go back to the planning commission on the 17th.
Yes.
Yes.
And was there any feedback from state highway in any of the state highway meetings? I know they weren't directly related to this necessarily, but any discussions with state highway related to this?
No.
Bart, I'm sorry.
Any piece of this related to either the park and ride or sidewalks on property that is state highway easement?
We have not heard from state highway related to the park and ride in a considerable amount of time.
The last thing we heard was it's in the design phase. So, and they're waiting to get final approval for funding from the governor. So it's up to that. I'm really hoping it comes in. It would be a huge asset for our town.
Would it be worth contacting them, talking about this and the stage of process that it's in?
Yeah, I can definitely contact.
Prior to this 17th meeting?
Sure.
So maybe we can see more sidewalk in place? And I understand the burden, concern of the property owner. I do understand that. But at the same time, again, we want to keep people safe walking and provide them as many opportunities to get into town as possible.
So with that, we still can't require Rutter's to build the sidewalks. They are agreeing to do the curbs and the gutters. So basically, what it's going to show on the plan, if the planning commission approves it, it's going to be deferred. Improvement meaning when SHA comes in, SHA will be responsible for the sidewalks. Just in the pink.
In the pink.
Understood.
So ultimately, you will get the sidewalks. It's just a matter of when.
Sure.
Mr. Davis?
If we're waiting on some funding from the governor, do we need to have the mayor send a letter to our delegates and to our state senator and tell them, you know, there's some major businesses that could impact that with that park and ride? And especially if they start to develop Silo Hill Parkway, those cars are going to have to go. And then we're going to have people looking for places to park.
Yeah, if mayors.
I mean, yeah.
Sure. I think that's a great idea. This Rutter's is going to spark development in this entire area up here. So this is going to be key.
Mr. Mayor, are you on board?
I'm listening. I have talked to their, they have a realtor he's working with, and he's got embellished plans for over there. And some of, I think, we may have to temper.
But with state highway?
State highway.
Related to sidewalk?
It's been, it's always kind of an arduous situation to deal with state highway. But I represented the wave rights when they bought the park and ride. It's outside of the town. So you just work with them. You got to work with them.
But the question is...
Sure, I'll write the letter.
You'd be willing to write the letter?
So, yeah, we can, at staff level, we can write the letter.
Thank you, sir.
And have the mayor review it.
Just remind them, they just took care of Brunswick pretty well. It's our turn.
Yeah.
There we go.
Lay it out there.
There you go.
Here's what it is. I'm good.
Mr. Burns, you have any questions?
No.
I do have one for the planning zoning. If, I like for them to hold fans to the sidewalks that are in the orange, if they can, if you can, since you oversee the committee. Because with the multimillion-dollar property there that's going to be developed, when you put Rutter's in, that little piece of sidewalk is nothing. I mean, it won't cost anything.
No, and I feel that Mr. Golden explained it, and I'm sure he will that night, that there's no way out of it. Those sidewalks are going in that are in orange. Am I correct?
That's our strong recommendation, per the code.
So there's, it's not, it's a strong recommendation, but...
They can't decide.
Ultimately, it's the planning commission.
Right.
Right?
Isn't it the planning commission that says yes or no?
Well, technically, the planning commission can say no or yes. However, in the zoning code, we found that there's a section that requires sidewalks from parking areas to the entrances. So they would technically have to go before the Board of Appeals to get an exemption for that, which they'd have to show hardship, which would be very difficult to do.
So it sounds like it'd be very difficult not to put the orange sidewalk in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Any other questions for the planning zoning?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hot seat.
We don't get to go to the meetings, so we rely on you.
Correct.
Thank you.
All righty. Agenda items.
Next agenda item, actually, we'll probably be turning, we'll turn it over to our contractor. But this is the review of the fiscal year 2020 MHAA wayside exhibits for consideration. As you know, last year, the board approved wayside exhibits for Main Street. And we're going to continue with creating a historic walking tour for town. So these are going to be the drafts exhibits, and I will turn it over to our lovely contractor.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. In July, the town of Emmitsburg was awarded the MHAA grants. And Ion Design was requested to create four exhibits. And they include the Great Fire of 1863, one on Vigilant Hose Company, one on Chronicle Press, and the building in which Carriage House Inn is currently housed in. And you have copies of each one of these. Let's see, we're going to, I guess, where the locations were.
Do you want to come here, Matty?
So anyway, okay, well, I guess we're going to review the exhibits first. And the first exhibit, The Great Fire, tells the story of the 1863 blaze that destroyed so much of the town. The exhibit includes a map that shows the area that were most involved in the fire. There's also a photo that was taken by Alexander Gardner. And the mayor has just brought it to my attention that a couple of the locations on the photograph need to be adjusted just slightly in order to jive with the street map that people will be looking at. And so anyway, we will take care of that. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't see it on there.
It also explains how firefighting was conducted in the day, and of course, the great threat that fire posed at the time. And finally, the exhibit offers a sidebar story about the arrival of the Union Army just days after the fire and the initial, initially mistaken belief that the town had been burned by the Confederate Army. So anyway, that's sort of the content of this. And Mike Pillman did fact-checking on this. So, and the location, you see the little grassy area there? And the...
The exhibit would face this way, so you would be, look up this way, and you'd be able to see the Catholic church back here, the area, you know, where the fire started, and straight down these two blocks, areas that were most affected by the fire.
Are we good back? Do you have a question, Commissioner Ritz?
No, I'm, go ahead. You were saying the fire was over here, but it's over this way, right? It's like where the American Legion is, right?
Well, yes, but it started in the building that was on the opposite side of the street.
American Legion, that'd be the American Legion.
The tattoo parlor closest to the square, and then the Legion behind it.
Got it.
You're right.
Are we good on that?
It's right on the map.
Is that where the fire was, Krause's? Krause's?
Between that and the Legion, I thought, back in that area. Yeah. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you for bringing it up. Now's the time to do it, please.
So do we want to mark on the map the ignition point? You know, the fire started here, so you have a point of reference.
If we go back one...
It is on the map.
Shows you in that little box on the left-hand corner down the bottom. Number one says, "Fire started here."
Number one on the map.
All right. I totally missed that. I have a knucklehead. My apologies.
It's just hard to see in this light.
No, I had this at home, and I couldn't read it in the black and white, so...
That's all right, please.
Somebody needs more powerful reading glasses. Thank you.
Are there other questions on that? And we'll get with you, Mayor, and other parties to get that...
Maybe make it bigger so old people can see it. How about that?
Well, you know what? Maybe it should be a little bigger. No, quite frankly, I think that it could be as well. So anyway, the second panel deals with Vigilant Hose Company, and it provides an overview of the fire company that, as you know, has been such a part of the fabric of Emmitsburg. The exhibit makes note of the fact that the company's national status is the most visited firehouse in America, and the volunteers who make it all possible through their professional service and fundraising efforts.
Vigilant Hose, he's on Vigilant, aren't you talking about Vigilant Hose?
Yes.
Okay.
The lower portion of the panel provides a timeline of artifacts that were used throughout the company's history. And, you know, historic imagery, there's a wonderful photograph that we were able to find through the local historic society. And thank you, Commissioner Davis, for your help with us on that, this panel.
Frank, is that you third, third from the right?
I wouldn't know. I can't see. No.
I'm just curious, Mr. Davis, if the mustache has always been a firefighter thing? Because it looks like the first firefighter there. Is that something that goes back? Is that tradition for you guys?
I don't know. I shaved mine.
So Commissioner Davis, a question for you, sir. The, your predecessor, the president here, is that a formal uniform, a firefighting uniform? Or it looks to me like an athletic uniform, like a team uniform.
That is their parade uniforms. That's their formal dress.
Is there any value to saying that's their parade uniform in the display? Or do you feel that's necessary, in your opinion? Because I will totally defer to you on this one.
I'm making a guess. It looks like a parade uniform. I don't like that. I wasn't around.
Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough.
But believe it or not, we do have a couple of the uniforms that were just given to us.
No kidding.
We have some of the originals.
Wow.
The third wayside deals with Chronicle Press.
You have a question about the Vigilant Hose one, Ron?
Yes, certainly.
So the picture you have of all the members is a great picture. Would we want to, and this is just out of curiosity, would you want to put, like, which way it's facing? Because obviously, it says Farmers Banks, which I assume now is the PNC building.
Yeah, because I thought that was the hotel.
And the hotel, and then this...
The green one was the post office, which is odd.
Right. And so that's why I'm asking is...
It's looking north.
Actually, no.
It's looking south? Or is it looking north or south?
The bank, the bank is where the VFW is.
No, you got the, you got the curled stairway right there. I think...
So the only reason I'm asking is for reference.
I think it's just fine. I need you to tell me which direction is correct.
That's why I'm asking, too.
We're looking north.
Looking north. So that's a great, I mean, would we, would you want to put, like, a little annotation?
I think that that would be fine.
Looking north, because I think the people are looking, would like try to do a historical comparison to town how it is now.
I totally agree. No, I think it's good.
Just a question.
No, I think it's good.
Looking north across West Main.
Looking...
North across West Main Street. No, no, you got the, you got the curled stairway right there. That's looking north.
Yeah, but they're facing the other direction.
No, they're...
So I think if we're in the square right now, they're on Otz and the bank side.
Right.
Looking north. The curled stairway is on the right-hand side, which is the...
The former bank, isn't it?
Yes, Adam Bank, which is the, which is the VFW.
Can I not?
So the bank switched sides, yes.
No.
The bank's the old, is the VFW.
It would be north, wouldn't it?
Yes.
The stairs is Mr. Ireland's building.
Correct.
They're back to Mr. Ireland's building.
They're facing, they're facing south, but we're looking north.
The picture's facing north. We are looking, yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's, so you, so we're...
So we're looking north.
Looking north.
Across West Main Street.
They show where the fire starts here, too.
Get a tattoo.
Looking north across Main Street.
West Main Street.
West Main Street.
At the square. What else could we put there?
Is that everything, you think?
That's close.
Okay. All right. Okay. The third deals with Chronicle Press and explains how small-town newspapers were published throughout America until recent years. And this was oftentimes by commercial print shops that doubled as newspaper publishers. And certainly, this was the case with the Emmitsburg Chronicle, which had a run of 87 years and was operated for 45 years by the elder family. The exhibit offers a brief explanation of the line of type's role in the newspaper publishing days, as well as a sample edition of the paper from 1959. And the panel explains also that the building where Chronicle Press is located was originally... And the panel explains also that the building where Chronicle Press is located was originally, it was Emmitsburg High School, and that originally, it was a one-story building. We've worked extensively with Lisa Elder on this panel, as you can imagine.
Commissioner Sweeney, that's got your original Lions Club chart, I...
Oh, yeah.
Was that in 59?
Yes, it was.
Okay, there you go.
Because our, our Lions Club is 80, or 87, I think, 87 years ago.
That's the second one.
We've been in Emmitsburg.
It's the second one, yeah. All right.
Is that good?
One request for consideration. You know, I'm the grammarian, I did see this with my glasses. In the panel, under Chronicle Press, in the second column, last word of text, "on." I'm going to humbly suggest, as it's a preposition, we don't end a sentence on that, "on." So, can we just leave it as, "Its commercial printing operations continued," period?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the fourth panel, if we are. The fourth panel chronicles the many lives that the building located at 200 South Seton Avenue has had. Its first known use was in the 1870s as a granary, warehouse, and a retail operation known as Zimmerman and Maxell, and, and this was back in the days when Emmitsburg was, you know, among the, was in the wheat belt, you know, producing tremendous crops. When the agricultural production slowed, you know, in the late 1800s, the building housed a broom factory, and then during the 1920s, a canning operation was launched on the property. And it also served as a bus stop for portions of the 1950s and the 60s. And of course, it's, you know, longest-term use has been as a restaurant, and it began in 1953, when it was converted into the White House Restaurant, the first of many such establishments that have been housed there to this day. We work with a number of people on this, on this panel, everyone from the restaurant owners, to trailways, to, you know, finding out about the canning operation, and so anyway, this, it's, this building, this property has lived a very storied life. And the idea is, you know, to encourage people to look at, you know, the many uses that buildings have had, old buildings have had, gone through.
How's the name?
I think you did a great job.
Terrific.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, you know, the other three that you did last year, and now, now these, I just, I like the format. I enjoy these, too, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, thank you, and I'll pass that on to Ruth, I thought she did a beautiful job of, you know, designing them.
To have a picture of what it looks like now, today?
Well, the thing is, that's exactly what you're looking at today when, when you look at that panel. When you, when you look at that pa, it's, in fact...
Yes. I understand now.
Well, actually, there's, there's been some conversation about where it's going to be put, but it seems like the best place would be, like, right in here, or in here. It's, that's where the most people will see it, those people that are entering the restaurant. And with wayside panels, that's kind of the idea, is that, you know, you know, whatever you're seeing on the panel, you're interpreting what's right in front of you.
True, yeah.
You can see that now, with the, with the old one and the new one up.
I remember Gentleman Jims, though.
Scott?
Yes.
I, I, we probably need to just check with their family if Gentleman Jims may still be open in Rockville.
Okay.
They expanded up this, but I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that. They had two restaurants, I think they still have Gentleman Jims down in Rockville, and the family has, I don't know what the ties are.
No, I think they closed, they closed that.
Check with them.
All right, I will, okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Sorry, I missed that, apologize.
Not at all. That's what this, this period's all about, yeah.
Very good.
Are there any other questions?
I don't have any, anybody got any questions?
No, I didn't have any, any...
Great job, Scott.
All right, well, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Pleasure to work with you all.
Thank you.
Sir?
I think they still own it.
Should go quick.
I, I know their family.
Hey, second, second agenda item. Staff presentation on proposed ordinance 19-07.
Okay, so you guys probably saw, it's pretty lengthy, so I'm not going to go through each in line, I'm sure you all read it.
You're right, you're not.
But I'll... I got three sentences I'll read to you, so, three or four. So, the town's forest conservation program, which is Town Code Chapter 1648, was originally created in 1993. Small amendments to this chapter were approved in 2002 and 2014. Periodically, the General Assembly of Maryland, with guidance from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Forest Service, amends the state's Forest Conservation Act. The town is required to update the town's forest conservation chapter each time the General Assembly amends the act. If passed, the proposed amendment would bring the town into compliance with the current version of the act. So basically, each year, they send me a blue book, and any kind of changes, we recommend it here in the amendment. So, are there any questions? Other than that, I don't have anything else. We're recommending it get sent to the Planning Commission for their mandatory review, and then back to you for a public hearing, and then the vote.
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Sure, I'll ask the obvious ones last, but the upfront ones. Does any of the language included in this reduce available parcels for commercial or residential development, or other, like, institutional development? Like, do we find stuff that, as a relationship, in relationship to forestry, or the wetlands, or whatnot, are now off the table for development? Like, for example, years ago, we ran into the floodplain issue being modified, and the floodplain affected what was available, so...
No, it's the same.
Terrific, okay. And is there any language in here that would affect recreational use, including the multi-user trail being expanded, or limit hunters in their, in their recreational activities?
Definitely not.
Great, thank you, okay.
Any other questions for Scott? Commissioner Ritz?
No, I, obviously, I'll have more time to look at this. The next step would be for us to send this on to the Planning Commission, right?
Yes.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Mr. Burns?
I'm good.
I don't have any questions either. I, I recommend we send it, you need, you don't need to, just need the...
I do need a vote.
Motion, motion and a vote.
Oh, you need a motion and a vote? Okay. So I need a motion to send this to the planning committee?
I make a motion to send this item, the...
19-07?
Ordinance Series 2019, ordinance number 19-07, to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
We wasted a lot of trees on that. Good thing we're planting more.
Exactly, yeah.
Next agenda items, staff presentation for proposal for ordinance for 19-08 for buffer zone requirements.
This is a nice, short and sweet one also. So at the last meeting, we were directed from the board to draft an ordinance, proposed ordinance regarding the commercial buffer. So, Town Code Section 172090 was approved, originally approved in 2015, in order to limit potential noise and light pollution from businesses in the commercial zoning districts, which is the B1 and the B2 zoning districts, onto neighboring residential districts. So if passed, the proposed amendment would allow the Planning Commission to waive the commercial district buffer requirements during the site plan process, if the Planning Commission determines that the proposed use of the commercial property would not cause detriment to the neighboring residential properties. This exemption would only apply to the neighborhood commercial buffer, which I do have a map, if you want to see that area, but it's only a limited amount of properties.
Is that Emmett Gardens?
That's in, right in front of Emmett Gardens, yes.
And then the parcels in Brookfield. Right, and then there's seven parcels in front of Brookfield.
We thought, we thought this would be a good option, so if there are... Yep, if there are residents that have a problem with any new business, that they can come to the Planning Commission, we properly advertise it, so they could let the Planning Commission know that, hey, you know, this is going to cause too much light pollution or noise, noise pollution, so we need a fence, or vice versa.
I need a motion to accept ordinance...
Actually, this is going to be, sorry, I'm sorry.
To them, too.
Sent to the Planning Commission, too.
Right, we need to send it.
Yes, I'm sorry, yep.
I need a motion to send it to Planning Committee.
I propose the motion to send ordinance Series 2019, ordinance number 19-08, to the Planning Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero.
I'd just like to thank the staff for finding a way to make that happen, that's kind of what we're hoping for, and that's great, that'll, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alrighty.
I'd follow up with that.
Yes.
Been in contact with the insurance group, Bobby Phelan, about that, once it goes through and everything?
Yes, sir.
And then, what about the two residents that were here that expressed concerns? Commissioner Davis, have you?
The Millers.
Sarah, Sarah Miller and...
Yeah, they're on my parks.
Okay, so you'll speak with them and explain them, and we hopefully resolve that situation for them.
Yeah, we've been in real close contact with Sarah. We've been bringing her in the loop every step of the way, because she is very concerned, and we keep her concerned, and yeah.
Thank you. She was a major part of our planning and zoning for a long time.
I love talking with her, we talk on the phone for like a half hour, and she has such a wealth of knowledge of Emmitsburg, it's amazing, yeah.
Alrighty, I want to, the next agenda item, number four has been postponed, the small sale. Number five, access of fee structure for the Emmitsburg baseball and softball fields.
All right, I'll let Commissioner Davis go ahead with his proposal. The only thing that staff did was attach the policy 201801 that the board passed on February 5th of 2018, related to ball field fees, single-day use, league use, and tournament use. And then I put on everybody's desk the revenue and expenses related to ball fields for the last several years, as well as the field usage for the last two years. Just some information. I will turn it over to Commissioner Davis.
Okay, as you all know, that's, it's been a hot topic for the last two or three years to try to get some youth baseball back into, to the Emmitsburg area. And after meeting with several groups, and we had a, had a meeting of concerned parents, which we had a fair turnout for, and then running this by the Parks and Rec Committee, even though we didn't have a forum to, to make any formal recommendations. This is what we have come up with, in hopes that we will have some competitive youth baseball and softball back in Emmitsburg this season. Taking all the entities that have used the fields in the past, and the people that are looking to use the, use them now. So I'll try to make this as short and sweet as possible, and hopefully, you'll, you'll understand. The Thurmont Little League would like the use of the old Little League field, along with, so that would be Field...
That's Memorial Park, right?
There, there we go. So that would be Field 7 for Little League baseball, and Field 5 and 6 for a smaller group, what do we call it, T-ball, and, and, and things like that. Yeah. Right now, we have about 45 Emmitsburg children that are registered down there to play, and some of the people that were here at the other meeting, their children are in Fairfield, and they said that they would probably move their kids to Thurmont if it was possible to bring part of the, the games back here to, to Emmitsburg. Thurmont Bay Bruth, which is a separate organization, has expressed an interest of having, I guess we got to flip back over, to Field 3. I think we, we have about 11 or 12 kids that are either playing, or have showed an interest in the Bay Bruth, and how many teams do you have, one or two?
We have 16.
Yeah, we anticipate having six.
Oh, 16? Okay, okay, so with the influx of our people, that's, our ki, our kids, that's where that one's headed. Field number, back to the other, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Back to the, to Field 4, which is the, the girls' softball. Katotan Rec Softball League has shown an interest in wanting to, to come up here. So we'll, actually, the president of that league actually lives in Emmitsburg Zipco, not in town, but on Keysville Road, so she is actually, runs that organization, and they are in need of fields because of the influx of Emmitsburg kids that we have sent down there.
Awesome.
So that would bring some type of baseball, softball back to Emmitsburg this season. Now that we're not going to have games there every night, it's just, you know, it's just, it's, it's going to be the beginning. But I did attend a meeting of the Thurmont Little League the other night, and I got to sit next to their scheduler and planner, and he said he has already incorporated games to be played in Emmitsburg. So that's a, that's a good thing. Now, we have a couple other entities. Mount St. Mary's Club Baseball, they are also interested in using Field 1, Field 3, along with the Bay Bruth. And talking to the Bay Bruth president, he didn't see a problem with that, he thought there'd be plenty of usage there, they only play like six or seven games, and it would be showing a good, a good neighbor to, to Mount St. Mary's, which we're, we're trying to do. And I have spoken to the Mid-Maryland Travel Baseball, and they are also interested, what he had told me, in a limited time to, to practice on those fields, too, when they're available, so...
And that includes Field 1?
That would include Field 1 and Field 3.
East 2.
It'd be nice that they're going to be used again, because we maintain them every year, and nobody's using them, except for the travel team that was practicing on them. But it'd be nice to see children playing on them again.
So I guess the next thing is cost. I heard from a lot of parents that, that they're, they're really upset that we would charge the Little Leagues to, and the Bay Bruth to, to use those fields. That they, they feel that should be part of the, of our responsibility to, to make sure they're there as part of the parks. And that's what I'm recommending for any of the Little League, Bay Bruth, and the Katotan Rec, anything that is a nonprofit, along with Mount St. Mary's, to, to use those fields free of charge. Now, if we have people that want to come in and use them for tournaments and money-making deals, that's a different issue, and, and I'm okay if we would charge for them to take care of our cost, and so we can recoup some of that money. But I just feel that, you know, Parks and Rec, we're never going to make money off of it, that's something that we, as a government, we have to bite, bite the bullet. You know, we open a pool every year, knowing that we're going to lose money, and, you know, the rest of the park is, is just the same way, we just, that's something we just have to, have to bite the bullet on.
Will they be using the concession stand and stuff?
Uh, well, they're trying to, I don't know, do you all have, they have a concession stand at theirs?
We're with Bay Bruth, so we'd only be at Field 3.
Commissioner, can you have them come up and introduce themselves, so that we have it for our minutes, please?
Come on up here and introduce yourselves, that way you have your name and your, where you were from.
Hi, hello, my name's Eric Kraus, I'm the treasurer of Bay Bruth, Thurmont Bay Bruth. We're requesting to use Field Number 3, and I do not believe there is a concession stand there. So, our organization will not be using the other fields where the concession stand is.
Thurmont Little League, were they used to concession, I mean...
I'm, I'm actually also, my name's Justin Gisir, I'm Vice President of the Bay Bruth, and, and we would only be using Field 3. We're all 60/90.
Thurmont Little League did, they do want to get the concession stand opened back up, it's going to take a couple years to get it back up to what it was, where they were serving, you know, pizzas and, and, and hot foods out of there, but they do... were serving, you know, pizzas and, and, and hot foods out of there, but they do want to get it up where they'll be serving snacks and drinks, and things like that out of there immediately.
Is there anything left in the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Everything's gone?
We haven't been in there in a little while. I think they cleared everything out.
Because there was a nice machine and a snow coat.
I, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what's left in the concession stand.
I haven't been down there yet, either.
It hasn't been used for several years, so even if there's stuff in there, it may not work anymore.
Alrighty, well...
Um, if I can't, go ahead.
Yes, Catherine.
I'll defer to staff.
Um, so in years past, uh, what we do in here is we have, um, a ball field agreement that has to be signed, um, they're required to submit their 501-3C, and provide, um, proof of insurance, and the board passed a policy several years ago, which, um, says no field can be booked seven straight days, that one, that each field has to be left open one day a week to allow, um, that's non-league, um, reservation, to allow, um, and I use the example, we used to have a group from the provincial house that would come over and pay, and reserve the field and play, pick up, I think it was like one or two Mondays a month, um, if somebody wanted to, a family wanted to go out and reserve the field and play for reunion, um, so that was the idea of to keep one, each field open one day a week, to allow others to have opportunities, excuse me, to utilize the field as well. That's just historically what I think the board had decided, um, with a previous policy.
It doesn't matter what day, just one day?
Correct, and you could vary it, you could leave three, uh, field three open on Tuesdays, one open on Wednesdays, it's, it's at their discretion. Typically, what we had done with the Emmitsburg Little League is their contract ran for eighteen months, and we had a deadline when we needed the schedule by, um, so we knew when they were going to be utilizing the field, and especially if you're going to have five different groups, um, who preferably work out their schedule amongst themselves, and then provide it to the town. That would be, um, the best way to go about it moving forward.
Yeah, you will need some kind of, they'll have to see each another's schedule anyways, because to schedule the games, you won't know when Mount St. Mary's needs it, and they won't know when you need it, so you will need to see each other's schedules.
In the, in the past, last year, Mount St. Mary's came and used our field.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they used to use your field, the last two years, I think they were able to stick in these cars, um, and we just scheduled them in, based on, on our schedule.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know how, does the town schedule all the games, is that how it works?
No, what, um, and this has been a while since we'd only had one group using it before, so it was very easy. Um, our office manager would get in the reservations, and then she would have a breakdown of who was using which field, which, she had a spreadsheet, which field and what day, um, but with this, basically all of your groups coming from Thurmont, I know Commissioner Davis's, um, hope, and my hope would be that you guys figure out your schedule amongst yourselves, and then you provide it to the town, um, and that's basically so we know when the fields are being used, um, and when they're not being used, and, and that's all the town really needs to know, and that the fields are being maintained, so that if we come in on a Monday, and something's trashed from a Sunday or Saturday, we know which organization to contact, um, as far as any repairs or damages that would need to be, uh, addressed.
So my proposal is that, for your all's field, Thurmont Bay Ruth would have first priority to it, and you would work with the other two organizations to, to give them as much as you possibly could.
And what we've done in years past, I believe we had with, um, Emmitsburg Little League, they were to have their, uh, schedule for that upcoming year, I think it was by like January, January 5th or February 5th, um, because I know the seasons kickoff in March, um, and that would allow us time to get the fields ready, um, but in this agreement, it also addresses what your responsibility would be as far as ma, maintaining, um, the fields, and then what the breakdown for the town would be as far as maintenance is concerned also.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, pardon me. Maintenance questions, and this is more, I guess, toward sort of the board and staff Will we require a deposit that's refundable, like a hundred percent deposit, like a hundred percent refundable deposit, so there's some backstopping, no pun intended, for, uh, appropriate Is that something that the, the board is interested in seeing? The other question I have would be, um, once the schedules come forward to town staff, can town staff present that with literally like a, a calendar, so one can check online to see who's there? That way, we have the visibility and the transparency, but also the accountability of those organizations. And for clarity's sake, again, coming back to maintenance, um, for the maintenance piece, is it possible to expand that to the parking areas? Now, that, that puts a burden on those organizations beyond the fields, and I understand that is a burden, but also, it would be, um, I know that, uh, in years past, after Little League events, I would police up the parking lots and the lane, um, even after my kids were long done, just to, you know, have a tidier appearance, and, uh, I, I think, you know, the staff is duly burdened, perhaps we could ask our, um, our, our park users to pitch in on that. Would that be something?
As far as what cleanup of the parking lot?
Trash and stuff.
Just, you know, just getting it squared away, so it's, uh, not littered.
I mean, I think that's a reasonable expectation.
And, and I don't think any one group was, you know, more litter-y than any other group, so to speak, it was just, you know, to put it out there for the groups for consideration.
We, we do not have any trash barrels over there at the time, do we now? There used to be when they was used, but I don't think there's any trash receptacles over there on the fields, so we will have to get...
Some, some fields I think have them, but some do not.
Taken away at this point.
The other, the other side of it, Mr. Davis, um, I, I will call you a miracle worker, based on your, uh, legwork on this, very, very impressive, and perhaps we could throw you into the rectangular field business of field two for the fall...
I already started.
With soccer and football, and field hockey.
Right.
And boy, would I love to see some field hockey going on. Um, I think that would be a real boon to our...
I have a question.
Arkotan program.
I have one more question.
So just seeding an idea, sir, I'll be quiet.
I have one more question for the Bay Ruth. There is a lot of businesses and stuff in town, it might be nice if maybe one of them may, maybe want to sponsor a team here in Emmitsburg?
Nothing that?
Yeah. I mean, we used to sponsor all, we used to have twenty teams, um, from, um, T-ball up to, um, Bay Ruth, eighteen-year-olds. There were twenty at one time playing, at one time, uh, now we haven't, none. So each one of those teams has a sponsor from here, from town, so it might also get our businesses and stuff back in, and we do, we did have, um, in the old days, they, they bought signs and stuff, put on the fence, and that was, that money went to the, uh, to your league, and stuff like that, if you would get businesses in one of...
Commissioner Davis, if, or any, Commissioner, if you're interested, uh, Commissioner Davis and our president's contact info, and, um, can reach out to Mr. Walter. Uh, each of our teams this past year was sponsored, and we have their logo on our jersey, and we did have signs on the outfield fence.
So, so you'd be okay with us putting signs on the outfield fence?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure they...
You sure?
Actually, a new, actually, the new sign ordinance allows it, so...
There we go. The Little League is asking about it also.
Yep, they're good.
It might be nice to have a team sponsored from the town, if you guys are playing in here, for it, I mean, I don't know who would do it, but, you know, the Lions Club sponsored a team, the Legion sponsored a VFW.
Otts did one, Palms did one.
Mm-hmm.
Have to, thank you.
So moving forward, what we would have to do is bring this policy, 2018-01, back to you, amended with, um, if so desired, the recommendations, uh, for fees related to the ball field. And what I'm looking at, what I'd take is some recommendations of what you'd like to see changed on this, and then we can bring it back, um, to the board for a vote, since this is for consideration, we can't make the changes tonight, um, and then, that's basically what all staff needs, and then, um, leaks and move forward submitting applications, or, go ahead.
No, just, eh, on that note, um, in a perfect world, um, having this amended and voted on by the board, what, what's the timeframe for, uh, 2020 season? I mean, we'd have everything in place for, um, Bay Ruth and whoever to use the fields?
Can bring it back to the board at the January meeting.
Okay, and that would be enough time?
Decision's made by January, yes.
Okay.
Well, basically, all you're doing is...
Fee structure?
Is just adopt, is approving the policy, right? Is that all you need approved?
I thought we were potentially revising the fee structure as well.
Well, that's the policy. Oh, and the code, yes, I need to bring the code back to you as well.
Another question for staff, Mr. Sweeney, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, for tournament use, we certainly want to encourage tournaments, um, our fee structure alignment regarding tournaments, could we have a little, I hate to say, but research done there to make sure that we're aligned with fees there?
Well, that's, that's, we did, that's how we came up with these numbers before.
Terrific, okay.
So, um, that's how we came up with all these numbers, Ms. Ray did a lot of, um, background research on all of this.
Okay.
Um, that's how we came up with these numbers.
So those, those recommendations would be in the next document, then?
Yeah, because we did have some travel teams come in and use the fields last year for tournaments and things like that.
That's great, I mean, we certainly want to encourage it.
But the Thurmont Bay Ruth teams won't be charged for tournaments and stuff, you have, you'll be playing here, so...
Dirty locked in, so to speak. I, I do have one question.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Just for clarification, on page number seventy, under, um, the bulleted items near the bottom, all the different fields, field number one references Maryland Storm, I believe Maryland Storm is a travel team, it's, it's confusing to me.
They have not, and I don't know how that field got nicknamed the Maryland Storm Field, I guess maybe because of all the problems we had with the, the damages to the field. That team, that field was, it was used by Mid-Maryland.
Okay.
Um, it should just be field one, we just, in, in-house, when we start talking about fields, because you start throwing numbers out, it's just easier to remember if you nickname it.
I know field three's a sixty, ninety field, I believe, what is, is field one the same? Is it slightly, little smaller?
Smaller, fifty, seventy?
Fifty.
Which is larger than the Little League field.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other field's ninety, right? Their full...
Is, is this the time to talk about public use, too? Is this where we should talk about, you know?
I didn't have a chance to look up your question.
Okay. Yeah, my, my concern was, on a Sunday afternoon, there's nobody using the fields, and Joe wants to bring his...
The Ritz family reunion.
Yeah, kids down, that it should be okay to use the field.
It was okay, but I was almost arrested for that.
Well, you're, you're just shady looking, that's all, yeah.
Mr. Sweeney, that's a whole different reason, but...
Yeah, they had wars out for you, that was different, but, um, we, we, we should be able to, you know, I, I know there's a liability issue that everybody's worried about, but...
Correct.
You know, in, in this business, you're, you're going to have liability issues, what if, uh, somebody gets bit by a dog at the dog park, or somebody gets, you know, bit by, bit by an animal while they're on the trail, or, you know, are we, what if a tree falls down, and somebody walk in the trail? You know, you, you gotta, it's all part of business, I guess, that we do, that we're going to have, and anybody can sue anybody.
Correct.
We do have insurance in the park, correct? Yes, we do have insurance.
So, so I think what happened was, it was a couple of years ago, our insurance company recommended that you restrict public use for liability purposes, um, however...
Say we get a new insurance company.
What's that?
Say we get a new insurance company.
We do.
Or a different policy.
We do.
Or a different policy, I don't...
But even so, I, I believe Commissioner Davis is stating that, you know, i, i, if a resident, and there's nothing going on, they would still have to check the calendar, do, can they just use, show up and use the field, do they have to talk to the town office?
Well, I would think on a Sunday afternoon, all of a sudden, you decide, your son wants to come down and say, Dad, can we go down and, and practice pitching? You come down, there's nobody here, you should be able to go on the field without being...
And they do.
That's a situation right now.
I drive past field one every day, and there are kids and parents out there playing all the time. Um, what I would suggest is if you know that you want to play, say, you know, say Wednesday afternoon, I'm getting off work, it's beautiful out, just call the town office, check to see which fields are open, because you'd hate to get down there, you get all set up to play, and then here comes, you know, the leagues that have it reserved, because they do have priority over it.
I think, I think essentially what you're, the, the establishment needs to be made is, if you're going to do anything larger than a group of, you know, three to five people, where you're just kind of doing a pickup game, then absolutely call to make sure you're not going to be thrown off.
Oh, right, yeah, I mean, you...
So, I mean, I think that, that's...
We'll do that on Saturdays.
Right, and you won't be able to do that on a Saturday, Sunday, but I think there, this, the, the notation needs to be made towards, and known towards the people in town, that, hey, you know, you have rights to the field, however, when there is a league game, or a team coming in, they have first, first, you know, first right to use.
And that's the way it's always been, but, believe it or not, back, when we had all this going on, we also had a, a twelve-team softball league going on at the same time up here, and, and there was, you know, you knew when you could get on the field, when it was softball time, you got off the team's schedule and played, and...
Can the schedules not only be put on, in the, for the parks for the, on, online, but can they be posted in the park? Like in our post, we have bulletin boards in the park that can post open days where they can go play.
Well, the closest bulletin board you have is, is at the top of the, um, I'm drawing a blank on the street name, up by the swimming pool in Community Park, that's the closest bulletin board you have, you know, that's something that, you know, we can think about doing for, you know, in the next P, round of POS grants, is to submit, to try to get an informational, um, kiosk in the park, and there, we could post it then, a lot of the parks do have, you know, information and everything, we could put one in Memorial Park also, um, just have to change it regularly. Um, I'll have to talk to Ms. Ray about add, how you add the calendar, so people can access and look at it, um, so people are aware.
Our concern is, if anybody messes it up, since you're responsible, if you sign up for the fields, that they don't, you, we don't want it messed up if it's not you. Any other questions?
Do we need to give staff direction to move forward on this?
Please.
That's a yes?
I was going to say that.
I think you need to bring the, we need the policy brought back, and the, uh, ordinance, we have to change it.
Well, yes, and I'd like to know what you're looking for in the policy, um, if you look at the policy as it is now, you have it broken out to single-day use, league use, and tournament use, are we striking all the fees, are you striking, I, I need some direction on what you're looking for.
I think he just wanted, um, nonprofit organizations, um, that do not charge...
Correct.
For us not to charge?
Yes.
Number two is...
Like, uh, traveling teams and stuff where you have to pay, they have, you know, they're not, um, nonprofit, they keep their schedule for like, for tournament plays and stuff, or, or if they, or if they book the fields for single use, they have to pay. Do you want the fee schedule to stay the same as it is now?
I think if you're not going to charge, if you're not going to charge fi, four of the five, then you shouldn't charge any of them.
Well, my, my problem is with the travel teams, they're, they're paying big money right now to, to practice places, they rent warehouses and, and, and other things like that, and it's kind of a, so, nothing against it, I had, I had a niece that played travel softball, but, you know, they're, they're, they're charging kids a thousand dollars to play, and somebody's doing something with that money, that, that they should, that's just my...
Those are for-profit organizations, I mean, that's, versus nonprofit, and I, I would definitely agree with Mr. Davis regarding that, I think it's reasonable to charge a fee for a for-profit entity to pay for a service in that context.
I, I agree.
You would not scare them away?
No.
Correct.
No, just enough to help...
It would also help offset the cost of the mowing, or, or the ball field mix, or, you know, every little bit of help.
And our reason being, it's, that's not open to the public. Anybody can play Little League, anybody can play Bay Ruth, anybody can play rec softball. To play on the travel team, whether it be Mid-Maryland, whoever, you have to try out, they're only going to take so many people, and then when your kid gets selected, and you're all happy, and then... you're all happy, and then they say, and I'd like to have the thousand-dollar check by Tuesday, you're not happy anymore. And, you know, so it's a it's it's a closed group of people, it's not open to the public, that organization's not open to the public. And that's my reasoning for saying they should pay a little bit.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, so town staff has some direction, so the fee structure would be no charge for nonprofit organizations, and it would be the daily fee structure previously amended in two thousand and eighteen for the travel baseball programs? Which would be fifty dollars per team, per field, per
Per day?
Per day.
And and they also play for tournaments?
And then pay for tournaments, any tournament tournaments hosted. Does that sound correct?
No, I'm confused now.
So, travel teams would pay a fifty-dollar flat fee per day for usage?
For league use, are we looking at ball field fee fees, number, letter B?
Yes.
Well, we got two, we got resident and non-resident. So is the league address based in Emmitsburg or not?
So non, so it'd be non-resident, then? So it'd be a hundred dollars?
What would it do to our budget if we if we didn't charge them and ask ask them for a donation?
Well, if you look here, the one spreadsheet, so in two thousand and nineteen, and then two thousand and eighteen, we charged fees. And you'll see in two thousand and eighteen, we had a loss of two dollars, and two thousand and nineteen, we had a gain of thirty, roughly thirty-eight hundred. The prior years where we did not charge anything, you'll see that there was a loss.
So we made thirty-eight hundred dollars from the travel league last year, or this year?
Two thousand and nineteen, yes.
This year. And and well, that excess we made there cover some of the ball field mix, and we provide them with ball field mix and stuff?
Well, no, I mean, their their revenue helped, we received some grants to do some of the work that helped balance it out, to put it in the into the positive. What you'll see is the revenue, so overall, we've we've brought in thirty-eight hundred dollars in in general fund revenue, and that was from the ball field fees for two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen.